It is eight AM, I'd like to get underway. This is the town of Sherburne zoning board of appeals. It is Monday, June 10th, 2024. This is a further deliberation session on the Farm Road Homes project on Farm Road in Sherburne. It is an open meeting in the sense that anybody is invited to, uh, to watch either in real time or on the, or on the videotape. Video recording, there are no tapes anymore. Um, but, but discussion is, is between the board members on what to do about this. Um, board members, if you're ready to get underway, I thought I might recap where we were and try to talk about where we're going. And let, well, actually, you know what I'd like to do first? Let's talk about timing and further meetings. Um, I don't think we have anything else scheduled. We need to vote by June 20th and we need to file by sometime in early July. I think it's the first or second. Um, I think I circulated that earlier. Do you want to defer until later this meeting to see whether we need further meetings? I think we need to schedule something ahead of the 20th to actually vote to, uh, approve or disapprove at least an outline of our decision if the decision isn't written by then. Jonathan?
Mr. Chair, just to remind you, you do have a meeting scheduled for the 20th?
We do have a meeting scheduled for the-
At seven o'clock.
PM, okay, all right, so good. So that's our fallback is we will, we will meet on the 20th. Um, what else do we have in the agenda that night, Jeanie?
It's just a, an accessory apartment, special permit, just one.
Okay, great, good, so all right, so-
That's June 20th at seven?
Seven, yep.
Thank you.
And then the 26th, you will open the hearing for Brush Hill Home.
Correct. Although I'd like to say on, uh, on both of those meetings, I'll be delighted to have Zach running them. He said with a sly wink. Okay, can I, uh, can I recap where we were, board members, please? I believe that we had agreed as to the matter of title, we were going to, acquire that the title, um, condition be cleared, before a building permit could be issued. On drinking water supply, I believe we had agreed to gra- to craft a condition essentially saying that the water system, whether public or private, had to meet the performance standards of a public system in terms of testing redundancy, resiliency, and the ability to cross-connect in the event of a failure of an individual well. Um, how was, how was, how am I doing so far? Those two correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. On, um, uh, on the septic, my notes are a little bit less clear. I thought we had settled on saying we wanted to condition, uh, the project on a third-party, impartial third-party testing less than the standard. Is that, is that where we were going when we left our discussion? I know-
Yes.
Go ahead, Todd.
Yes, that, that's where we left it and we, we began to dip into the nuances of that and the specificity that we have to get into. And I believe it's a rather yes or no question that we would then need to pose to that independent third party that would then have to answer it. Um, it, it cannot be just a broad study.
I agree. Um, they, they need to reach a conclusion. Um, and I want to look at my notes further from Tetra Tech, but I believe it's the, um, 10 milligrams per liter, uh, standard. I'm probably getting the technical name of it wrong, but it, it's in the materials that were submitted to us by Horstley and, uh, by Creative Land and Water and by, um, Tetra Tech. And my proposal to this group is that we, the requirement be that it be a disinterested third-party reasonably satisfactory to the board. I'd like to give the applicant some leeway to hire some, someone clearly impartial. But they can't just come back with their, with creative land and water and engineering, that's not an impartial party. How do you feel about that?
Uh, so 10 milligrams per liter at the property boundary line, I believe is kind of the, the area.
Correct.
I mean, I'd have to double check, but I think that sounds right. I also think the Board of Health raised an issue about the amount of nitrates per, uh, the amount of nitrate loading, as well in the last memo to us, which I think would also be a point to, to seek clarification.
I thought the nitrate, I, I thought that 10 milligrams per liter was a nitrate loading test.
The measure, the Board of Health was referencing 19 and like maybe 26 or something in the last memo, it was like the top three.
I, I believe that is the output rating that can be assumed in the modeling when the effluent leaves the, the tank for, for absorption.
That's right.
Go ahead, Zach.
No, I'm just, Todd, Todd's more articulate to me this morning, that's correct. He's, that was another point that I thought there was, I would say unclear, uh, resolution on.
Right. Um, but, but two Tods, more, more basic point. It's not that we don't care how it gets down to be 10, 10, 10 micrograms per, or micrograms per liter at the property boundary, but that's the standard. Whether they kind of do it by hook or by crock, I think that's what we care most about. I see Jonathan nodding personally. So, um, I guess I, I want to, I want to go back to my notes and make sure I've got the technical references right, but I'd, I'd follow Todd's lead and suggest that our resolution be that it be an impartial third-party report finding that that standard 10 micrograms per liter is met at the property line. I eat less than that. That's my proposal to this group.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Back, are you in?
Agreed.
Okay. Great, all right. So then our homework was to, um, take a look at other conditions, not that the other issues aren't important, but they are of less immediate health and safety and ownership, uh, stakes than, uh, the title of the water in the sewer. Did you gentlemen have a chance to spend some time with the various submissions by the, uh, Conservation Commission? Um, I, I think their most recent, uh, reply, reply, reply memo of April 22nd, 2024 seemed to, seemed to set the table. Did the rest of you see it differently?
I didn't, actually did not review that one.
Okay. God, Zach, any, any input on that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think the amount of, um, 50 to 100 buffer that's being disturbed, uh, definitely requires some conditions. I don't know. You know, I think there seems to be some ambiguity with maybe some of the planting suggestions the Conservation Commission has asked for, but I think, um, you know, given that there's substantial development in the 50 to 100, especially right near the, the entrance, I think that we need to think about some, uh, mitigation conditions there.
Yeah, um, I, I, I agree with that. What, what I'm struggling with is, of course, almost everything the Conservation Commission is asking for is based on our local regulations as opposed to the state regulations. There's nothing wrong with that, but 40B says that we're required to move aside any, any local regulations, um, unless, um, it outweighs the need for regional, the regional need for affordable housing, which we know HACX course is always having a very, very high weight. And therefore into the stow case, we'd need to find that they were essentially, um, critical to health and, health and safety and, um, the Conservation Commission's submissions say, well, we want these things, but they don't necessarily connect the dots for us. So we have to do, we have to, we have to guess. It seems to me. Um, did, did any of you read, read the materials differently? Okay.
No, no, Mr. Chair, I, and I, I interpret their commentary based on essentially their, their mandate, which is to protect the environment and protect health and safety, right? And so that, that's their rationale. So, uh, I suppose unfortunately in this case, that rationale is not articulated to the point, but that is their mandate and that's the reason for the, for the suggestions. Not sure if that carries enough weight for our purposes.
Yeah, no, no, they, they're definitely, uh, legitimate comments consistent with the Conservation Commission's mandate and, and, and but it, as, as I said, it doesn't, it does not do a helpful job of trying to, uh, intermediate the counterfeiting issue of which ones, which, which one is more important.
Um, I, I would agree with you.
Zach, would you, do I, do I take your comments? And I know you're, you're, you're on a train and therefore can't share things to say you were most sympathetic to the 50 to 100 foot, uh, buffer limits. Um, I, I also want to say in fairness to the Conservation Commission and in fairness to the applicant, I don't think this was zero sum where the applicant was saying, well, I won't do any of these things. I think the applicant was more saying, well, I don't have to do quite that much and I don't, I don't agree with your, your wish list. So there, there, I think there is room for us to intermediate here a little bit. So with that preview, Zach, what which, which conditions most resonated with you to the extent you can articulate that?
Um, I think some of the, the scrubbing plantings to establish, I would say some sort of filtration, um, function, especially near the driveway and the runoff. Uh, you know, if you look, there's a bit of a slope there, so I think, uh, just slowing down some of the water velocity and including some level of potential filtration, uh, turbidity, I guess, uh, would, would probably be my, my focus, just given the sensitivity of how much, you know, is coming in off the road.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Jonathan?
Well, I agree with what Zach just said. I'm, I'm just reviewing this memo.
Um, yeah. There are, there are a couple of suggested conditions and there have been in the ConsCom's interaction with the applicant. Uh, a number of suggestions for essentially conditioned subsequent. They'll come back to the Conservation Commission afterwards. I don't think it's within our power to delegate our decisions to other boards and to tell applicants that they have to go back to another board later. Um, I-
Agreed. Yeah, we can't, I don't think we can condition, uh, a re- a repeat, um. We can't get this noise.
Sorry. Someone will speak. Go ahead, Zach. Oh, Zach, maybe Zach's in the tunnel.
I, yeah, I think he, they were, um, announcing the next stop, so he muted himself.
Okay. I guess we're all grateful for that. Um, thanks, Jeanie. Um, I think we can condition, uh, a permit if we choose to do so on submitting further things to us as we are doing with the septic plan, provided we are articulated pretty clear standard. I think we want to be careful on, on, on wetlands because unlike septic, I do not think we have as clear and obvious a link back to the stow case on generalized wetlands concerns. Jonathan, do you, do you share that concern?
Well, uh, you know, looking at, uh, the plan that Mr. Moore submitted on, or the Moores submitted on, uh, May 21st,
Uh-huh.
Uh, 24, it, it is concerning to me about what the, uh, impact is going to be on the wetlands and the surrounding properties.
Okay, um, I don't have that one, uh, right at my fingertips. Um, how would we, how would we condition to try to deal with that plan? Or, or does, or does that, or do those materials push you towards this ought to be a straight turn down? Sounds like more condition issue.
Well, hmm.
Well, speak for yourself. Don't let me talk to you.
No, no, I, I'm, I'm concerned on the, uh, the impact uh, on the wetlands, you know, towards the town, the big green area shown on this plan. I'm referring to his May 21st, 24 plan. Uh, there's a proposed stormwater basin. Uh, and there, uh, there's an analysis showing water draining from the project site to the surrounding wells because the water is, is, uh, intakes are deeper than the, uh, than the plan for the septic. So the, uh, the stormwater impact on surrounding lands is very concerning to me.
Okay, let me try to, um, maybe you can describe it a little bit, Jonathan, and I'll try to go into my tab, see if I can open up my town email and put the plan up on screen. You say it came into us about, on, about May 21st?
Yes.
Okay, I got it, find it.
You're the top of the list.
Not mine.
I have it. You want me to share it?
Oh, yes, please. Jeanie, if you have it, share it, that'd be awesome. Faster than I am on the technical side as always.
Can you see it?
Yeah, there it is, okay.
And now, yep.
Jonathan, this is the one you were talking about, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Um, so, uh-
If you can scroll down a little bit.
Hold on.
Okay.
Is that enough?
Yes, that's, that's perfect.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's, I think that's pretty good. Um, all right, so Jonathan, what do you think we should do with this?
Well, uh, I'm just, I am concerned about the impact of this project on the surrounding private wells and the inability of the people in the immediate area to mitigate any, uh, damage to their well water.
Yeah. And, uh, and I'm not trying to be argumentative, I'm just trying to unpack which way you're going here. Is this mostly because of the septic flows or the non-septic stormwater flows?
The, uh, well, this is the, the, the septic flows are in the, uh, shown by the blue arrows.
I think that's right.
And the stormwater flow is, uh, also concerning if you look at, uh, the direction of the stormwater flow into the wetlands on the west side.
Right. Uh, um, and if the development team produced an inarguably neutral third-party report that inarguably stated clearly that the, uh, 10, um, milligrams per liter at the boundary standard is met, um, that would seem to deal with the septic aspects of this, or maybe not. How, how, how would, how would such a report impact your feelings about this plan?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure, uh, if the, this, this plan suggests that, uh, the, the septic flow would be from a, a deeper level and going off in, uh, different directions than that, uh, that boundary. Um, would that yes or no question be referred to, uh, the flows that are heading off the site to neighboring properties?
I, I think it would. I mean, as, as, as I sort of envisioned our, our, our prior condition on septic, it would have to be at the property boundary and it doesn't have to be the property boundary with the Moores, any property boundary. Um, you know, just the flow tends to head towards the Moores, but, um, you know, it can go once things are in the cracks in the bedrock, um, you know, what if it's heading, is this plan, this plan is roughly north-south. If it's heading off to the southeast, um, away from the Moores, I think that's, you know, those, those people also count too. I think Smith Fennell was over there. Um, I, I guess what I'm trying to um, unpack, and I'm not trying to argue with you, Jonathan, is where the issues on this plan differ from the septic issues that we were trying to solve with the third-party report.
Well, I, I don't know, Rick. I, I think that this is, uh, presented visually in effective way and, uh, my concern is meant, is met if our consultant will be able to make measurements, uh, at all borderlines that ensure that the 10-milligram level is not going to be exceeded.
And, and, um-
We're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, I, 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 I think so. Uh, Todd, Zach, uh, help us out here, um, are we, are we, go ahead, Todd.
So I, 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 I think, and maybe I'm oversimplifying or conflating the topics here.
Go ahead, Zach.
Service is a little, service is a little touchy right now, so I'll, I'll do my best, but I think what Jonathan's maybe saying is, I think what that diagram shows me is the risk of getting the nitrate loading wrong. I think part of the, one of the aspects the Board of Health discussed was the distance to an open wetland, which is, uh, doesn't meet regs, uh, which is 125 feet. Um, I think the loading in general of both, I think the risk of the septic and the proximity to that wetland, um, as well as the stormwater, maybe in the cumulative of, uh, in cum, uh, cumulative effect, I think we'd want to ask a question about two, or I think that just, again, highlights the risk. I think we can't really ask a single binary question and, and a third party. I feel like there needs to be a series of yeses, uh, in order for it to work. In particular, you know, there can't be too much assumption based on, you know, I would say calculations done by others, like there'd have to be, you know, true independent work, uh, to, to arrive at, I think the questions we might be asking if that's-
Okay. So let me try to, um,
Can, can you hear me?
Let, 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 go ahead, Todd. You, you, you waited for Zach. Your turn, please, go ahead.
Um, so, uh, I, I, I think we have essentially two things here and, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm confused in my eyes, so please correct me. Um, but we, there's a need for review of the engineering plans for the septic to assess the nitrogen levels and also assess the flows. We need to have a compounded analysis that also takes into account all other water management on the site and other receptors, whether they're wetlands or wells in the boundary. That is a bit of a different analysis, is, is it not? That would be a hydrological study as well, which I believe the Board of Health has been recommending from the very beginning.
I, I think there needs to be an impact analysis to the wetland with a confidence interval, you know, that's, that's fairly strong that, you know, we're not going to see deleterias impact, if that makes sense.
Okay, um, all right, let me see if I can pull these threads together. Um, and maybe it won't do a good job, and I know you guys will tell me if I, if I, if I fail.
Want me to stop sharing?
Uh, I, I'd actually, I'd actually leave it up, please, Jeanie. I think it's helpful. Unless, unless the other board members want it down. Um, it sounds like our discussion of wetlands has, in a way, reopened, um, our discussion of septic by saying, listen, the impacts, the potential impacts of this septic system and other contaminants, mostly the septic system, but things, other things could be stormwater, it could be in the stormwater runoff on the wells and the wetlands next door. It can't be, can't be disentangled. Um, they, they do relate to each other. And maybe what we need is a sort of combined condition that, um, requires the, um, responding third-party expert to, um, unpack a series of questions. Am I at least close to where you guys are going?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then we need to think about what those series of questions are and unpack them.
It's really is all interrelated.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, it's all about water and contaminated water, right? I mean, that's what we're discussing and then, and then the infiltration of contaminated water into water that we want to drink. I mean, it's, it's not, at the end of the day, I think it's, it's sort of simple, um, and we need to evaluate the total impact to two sensitive areas, uh, that flank the project.
And those two sensitive areas being the abutting wells and the wetland to the west more than the wetland to the east, probably.
Correct. Yeah, I'm thinking more of the wells, yeah, to the bottom right that I'm seeing on the screen and the cluster, the dense cluster and wetlands to the west.
All right, so we now have proof that Zach can see his screen. Um, all right, um, okay, um, I am not ready to, to prepare it right now to write that series of questions. I don't know if any of you are, but I, I guess I would ask you to come back. Um, to write up what you think that series of questions is, uh, individually. And it doesn't have to be an articulated legalese, but I think if we can share those at our next meeting, that will help in the drafting. Cause I, I do not feel comfortable that I personally have a really good grip on it by myself. If someone else says, wow, I, I've got this issue nailed, I'll, I'll, I'll write it up perfectly. You could raise your hand now. Don't, don't all volunteer at once. Stunning silence. Okay, so I, I, I think what I'm going to suggest to everybody is, is each of us take a shot at writing what this, what this, um, easy, to use Zach's words, he said with a smile, contaminated water impact on the wells and wetlands condition would be like.
Okay.
Um, taking aside the impact on the wells and the wetlands, um, and wanting to adopt some of the um, Conservation Commission's recommendations for the wetlands resource area, essentially the pond over to the east. Um, what else do we have? The Energy and Sustainability Condition Committee had a, a, a number of recommendations. Um, the applicant, as I, as I read it, was receptive to many of them, but was not saying, I'm going to adopt these as a wholesale matter. Um, there were a number of, uh, conditions suggested in Tetra Tech's letter on site design, fire turnarounds, this, that, and the other, um, that again, did not appear to be disputed. What else am I missing? Again, deafening silence. Uh, Jeanie, you could stop sharing.
The site design, uh, concerns include things like the bus stop um, being, uh, created and made available to the children who live there.
Yes, and, um, I, I think the, the the applicant was saying, if I recall correctly, uh, we'll let the school committee decide that. And I think I, I thought our sense of the board was that we really wanted that bus stop off- I I thought our sense of the board was that we really wanted that bus stop off Farm Road.
Yes, definitely.
That appeared to be the uh the sentiment from many of the the public who attended that specific meeting as well.
Okay, other issues like that that you can recall. Now, from the discussions, though, I'm going to ask you to come back on the twentieth with. A laundry list, shopping list of everything you want.
Yes.
And mem- members of the public who are watching us, while you cannot participate. You are certainly invited to remind the board, whether you're on the applicant team or not on the applicant team. X, Y, Z is in the record and you ought to pay attention to that. Because we can be reminded of things that are in the record, which it can't do, whether you're on the applicant team or not, is coming with new data. And everybody understands that. But I personally will be grateful for reminders of, wait, did you remember this? Did you remember that? Because we've been in these hearings for months and months and months and months, and there's. There are hundreds of submissions and uh and many more hundreds of pages of data. Okay, anything else that any of the board members can think of right now that are like the bus stop off Farm Road that are. Didn't seem terribly controversial, but we want to make sure are in our decision.
I can't think of any at this time that weren't already captured, at least are documented in the. Correspondence between the applicant's team and Tetra Tech.
In that case, I'd like to ask the uh board members to direct me to ask town council to start working on a form of decision. We haven't actually voted anything yet, but in terms of my guidance to him, I would be inclined to tell him that, as the title, we expect a. Um, condition that says the uh, the title has to be clear. This is, this is a matter. Um, and as to water, they can either uh. Um, redesign to be a public water supply system or not, but it's going to have to have the uh, the uh, the. The uh robust um and replacement and redundant features of a water supply system and testing of a water supply system. Um. And on the septic, um, we need to give him a little more guidance, but on 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 se- on septic and groundwater flows. Uh, and stormwater runoff, we we have this combined condition that we still have to articulate.
Yes.
And go, but the combined condition is essentially going to be a third-party, uh, an independent third-party report. Uh, hitting a series of points.
Yes.
Um, and we'll also add in additional, some of the the less controversial wetlands. Items and a number of site design items as well, that's, so I, where, where, what I. Think I'm asking you is to direct me to direct town council to start working on a form of conditional approval. That's my ask.
Could you just clarify uh a procedural thing, Rick?
Sure, if I guess.
This. Third-party comes back and says, um, in answer to questions. Yes, no, yes, yes, no, whatever. Now, we've already uh. Is our, is our uh decision to say if these conditions aren't unequivocally. Uh, acceptable, then the application is denied?
What our, what our application will say, something to what town council directs me is what we can say is. The application is approved based on the following conditions. Condition six. You come back with this independent third-party report which answers the following four questions, all yes. If they, if they aren't all, if they aren't all a yes, then there's no building permit because it was a flunk. Like the old-style series Christmas tree lights, one goes out, they all go out.
Yeah, okay.
That makes sense?
Yes, that's clear, thank you.
Uh, other board members, that makes sense?
Yes.
Yes, I I would agree with that logic, the the only, the only other nuance here is, uh. What if the independent third-party? Can't give a yes or no.
Then, then then he did not give a yes.
Anything other than a yes is not a yes and therefore.
Right, okay. Right, and I I think we need to phrase that standard. Um, fairly so that a fair professional, for example, if someone said to uh lawyers. Um, private practice lawyers, give an unequivocal opinion that X, Y, Z is the case, Jonathan would go say, wait. All the time, but they're not unequivocal. Now and based on the laws it is today. But nobody can guarantee what a court's going to do, and I think we need. Hydrology, same the way.
Yeah, yeah, con- conditioned upon industry accepted standards and assumptions.
So, yeah, their professional opinion, right. Me, because the reason why people pay a lot of money for opinions from firms like mine and others is. Partly we've got the big malpractice policy, but mostly we have a reputation to defend, we don't want to be wrong. Yeah. Then mostly, most of what you're buying is that person's fear of being wrong, worth a lot of money. Um, okay, um. Other further things we should discuss before the twentieth, other trailing lines, I've been trying to go through the file, I didn't see a lot. Jonathan, you're the only person I can see, but I'll ask all. What haven't I raised, which I did.
I I just have one further concern on this uh binary analysis. Are we. In effect, delegating the decision. To an independent third-party?
I I think to the extent that is, it is a conclusion, I mean, I'll talk with town council about this, it's a fair, that it's a. Professional engineering conclusion. As opposed to, wait, that person thinks the risk to public health is out, you know. This outweighs the risk to public health or something like that. Um, I I think if we stick to specific engineering standards. Um, we're fairly safe.
Okay.
But I, but I, but that's a good, good legal point, I will ask town council.
Okay, good.
I I do not think, people listening standpoint, I do not think we could say. Oh, Zach's getting to another station. I do not think we could say. We want that engineer to tell us their subjective belief is that it's overall safe.
That's right, now we want. Uh, objective factual conclusions.
Right, based, based on, based on this septic system and this location and this soils with this layout. And these wells nearby, I think the nitrate loading at the boundaries, at all the boundaries of the property is going to be under ten.
Yes.
And and while I think Tetra Tech came close to saying that, they weren't expressed on it and there was uh. We did have dueling experts, Horstley was very clear the other way.
Yeah.
And land and water engineering was very clear that it was passed, that it was a pass, so that's, that's the difficulty in which we find ourselves. Okay. All right, so our homework is, write up this magic condition. Drafts from each of us, um, I will get town council going on a form. And also think about any other trailing lines that I missed that we want to make sure are in the decision. Just those on the uh, on the twentieth.
Okay.
Um, are there further comments, questions?
I I guess just one question that's running through my mind is, um, and and this is probably because it's not my field, but. Uh, how much precedent is there for such a conditioned uh decision? Coming from a zoning board, um. Because if if we've taken on its merits, essentially as it is right now, uh. Uh, I I think I could speak for everyone, none of us are comfortable approving, right? So on its, on its merits, based on the information that's been presented from from all parties involved. Um, if we're not comfortable, our our decision wouldn't necessarily be to, to, to deny. Um, now, we're going to to great lengths, I I think we ought to, to to find a path to a yes. But are are we going above and beyond uh zoning board precedent in this matter? Or or are we still being um within the bounds of what's been done in the past, whether it's us or other towns in the state?
Good, 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 smart.
And if I could just add, add to Todd's comment here, my, the 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 technical. Precision needed for us to draft some of these conditions gives me angst. Uh, as a former litigator who used to craft discovery questions, and you had to be very artful in how you crafted them. I wonder if we're not magnanimously taking the burden of the applicant to meet his burden of proof by by doing this and twisting ourselves into knots, and I, you know. I, as much as I do want to, you know, approve with conditions, I just, I wonder if we are getting ahead of our skis here.
I will, I will, th- that is, that I will treat that as one combined question, which is, which is a very pertinent and good one. Um, I don't think we are going too far to try to or or getting too far out over our skis. I will ask town council this question, it's a good one, but I believe there is precedent for boards. Um, saying, look, we need a, we need a third-party, uh, essentially wise, wise person, wise man, wise, wise woman. A tiebreaker on this issue on the technical point, not on the board's basic decision of what's safe and not. And it sounds like the sense of this group is that if um. The world's greatest engineering company came back to us with pretty unequivocal answers that notwithstanding. Uh, the moors markup of of the plan and and Mr. Horstley's um. Uh, views and and his and his report, that they think the ten microgram per liter uh will. Will be met at at all property boundaries and that the storm, there will be other, that there will not be other material cup camp contaminants. Uh, damaging the wells or the wetlands nearby. That is my really inarticulate way of trying to articulate the question, um. That we would be comfortable approving the project. I mean, not comfortable, but 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 feel obliged to approve the project.
Yes, and if the uh, the expert is unable to. Uh, a- answer definitely yes, it'll meet that standard, then the project is not approved, period.
Right, right, I I I I would be comfortable, in the absence of such a report, I'd be comfortable turning down the project and saying it's not, it's not clear enough.
Yeah, me too.
I I I just worry about the uh idealism here being put forth if. If that, if that is the path that we can take and there's precedent there, I I wonder why other zoning boards haven't taken this path as well. Um, because I would imagine many, many others have competing opinions that they have to weigh in their decision.
Uh, Todd, I think they have, that's what I'll check with town council. I I think, I think our own board did in, for example, the Fields of Sherburne. So I don't think we're plowing new ground here.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Okay.
Um. Okay, in that case, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Um, if we need to have another meeting between now and the uh, the twentieth, I'll send her on by email and we'll have Jeannie post it.
Okay, excellent. I move to adjourn this meeting.
I second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of adjourning, vote aye. Novak, we do it by roll call, Novak votes aye.
Bitch, aye.
Labby, aye.
Zach, where are you?
Not sure if Zach has dropped.
And he's muted.
Well, if he doesn't come back on, we've got three votes, that's enough.
Yeah, we we do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you all. Talk to you soon.
Have a good day.
Okay, so something like I came through from Zach, close enough.